The Pompo Law Firm is in charge of the open space in East Bradford. And our comprehensive plan is rigged. And therefore, we would not have open space as East Bradford does.
Do you want to amend it to read exactly as you just read?
Yes. Right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor with the amendments? Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries for nothing. I make a motion to approve the March 8, 2016, for supervisors workshop meeting minutes as presented.
Second.
Questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries for zero. Citizens by request, Mrs. Scott?
My citizen by request is financial management oversight by the five board of supervisors, or better described as lack thereof. One. Is this correct? I don't know whether it's... First and foremost, I see a pattern of lawyers and wealth dictating our township's courts, as well as that of our neighboring townships and boroughs, and the city of Coatesville, and our school district. The unelected solicitors rule and write their own checks to do so. Wealth pumps dollars into our political systems through a lawyer lobbyist, in our case, to escalate their power and buy policies such as the comprehensive plan, contracts, et cetera, that increase their wealth and their open space at the expense of the rest of us. Fast-track, high-density development trash our environment and neglect of financial oversight by the board of supervisors of builders escrow has made East Fallowfield citizens actually subsidize builders with our general fund monies. The comprehensive plan is one example, a huge payment for that. Another is the window shield historical site survey contract, not even signed by the supervisors, of which the solicitor had oversight, and yet $25,000 to $30,000 was paid. The establishment of the COG bureaucracy. Now, I read the Chester Tax Collection, which really should read the Chester County Tax Collection, which gives us no oversight over the 1 percent. The township also used to receive a real estate tax duplicate, now we don't. Everything is just paid to downtown national bank. The lobbyists, the lawyers have centralized our government. We no longer have control. April 2015 letter to board of supervisors, Attention Joe Pomorsky from Mingus, Gatauski and Company. The auditor firm the board of supervisors appointed states a $764,000 negative in escrow funds. Non-reimbursement of cost is significant. 2012 and 2013 audit adjustments are not accurate. The year ending 12/31/2014. Old checks from 2005 to 2008, on claim funds, $17,656 as of 12/31/2014, not properly accounted for. I asked this board of supervisors, particularly Joe, who last meeting defended all about the escrow account, and you had that letter specifically addressed to you, knowing full well that letter of escrow has a negative of $764,000. I see a conspiracy of lawyers' control from the economic development and business and industry. They control all employers. I do believe they are the ones that are pulling in and out our treasures. It makes for muddy waters. Who do you go after?
This is not a forum to make accusations, please.
I see red flags as a result of that. Lawyer lobbyist power is transferring township employees. No audit has been conducted...
For making accusations, Mrs. Scott?
I'm stating fact. No audits have been conducted upon the departure of Mark Despe treasure, Jill Buchanan treasure, or Rosemary Moore treasure. There's no accountability. You can screw up and do wrong, cost us taxpayers all kinds of money, and it's...nobody's held accountable. What specific action will this board take? Mr. Lambert, per last meeting, you stated, number one, interest is finance. So I would ask that you look at those documents as a matter...and all of you evidently received copies. So what action did you take, Mr. Pomorsky? You were present.
All questions or comments should be directed through the chairman.
Okay, chairman. What action did you take?
On which part?
On the escrow $764,000 negative.
I have to go back and look at the document to see if we did anything at the time. I don't have no off the top of my head.
Well, I do find this board pissed and also addressing the presence because of I were coming on board and I was stating finance as if I would have been in here looking at it. And I don't see that happening. So I would hope that I will get a response. Thank you.
Thank you. Agricultural Security Commission?
Oh.
That's you? All right. Go right ahead.
I asked the members of the committee if anyone was interested in being chairman. And Garth Monahan said he was willing to do it, but then he also said to me, he really thought the chairman needed to be a board member. He thought it was per second-class township code. I called P. Suts and he said, "No." That's no, too.
The Agary Security Law Department, Government?
Is that correct, then?
Yep.
So Garth was right to just cut the long?
Right, yeah. It's just as a member, one citizen that's not a former...
Yes. Yes. And that the...a member of the governing body must be chairman.
So the chairman has to be that citizen, or can it be anybody?
It has to be a board member.
I think it's got to be a board member. A member of the board of supervisors.
Okay. I know Ed said in his email he'd be willing to do that if we had nobody else, so...but if we don't have any deadline on it, I'd say we'll wait to vote on him until he's here just in case he changes his mind.
Okay.
There's no push on that, right?
No, there's no applications or anything.
And that would just be a motion to make him a member of the board and the chairman?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay. I'll put it back on that side.
Okay. Solicitor report?
We've got two legal issues for your consideration tonight in action. The first is the Emergency Communications Booster Ordinance Amendment. As you may recall, for a discussion at the last meeting, the county had some revised guidelines for the Emergency Communications Systems Ordinance, mainly dealing with the extent of coverage that new buildings have to have for the county's system and the different frequency ranges that are signal interference that has to be provided. So we, for the board's approval last month, advertised that, and that ordinance is now ready for your consideration.
Okay. I make...I move that the township approve the amendment to the Emergency Communications System Ordinance in the form as advertised.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Sorry, I didn't hear. Four or nothing?
The other discussion point or action I have from a legal perspective is the Comcast cable franchise agreement. We've got a finalized draft of that ready for the board's consideration. It's the form of it. And it's got all the salient points that we discussed at the last meeting, which are it would be a 15-year agreement, so we'd have to negotiate it every five years, 5% franchise fee, which is consistent with our current franchise fee, the same density and coverage requirements by Comcast, some auditing protections, which actually weren't in the prior Comcast deal, and an $8,000 grant from Comcast to the township.
A one-time?
It's a one-time, yep.
I move that the township authorize the chairman to execute the form of Comcast cable franchise agreement in the form as presented.
Second.
Questions or comments?
Where's the $8,000 going?
It actually goes into our general fund. It's not a restricted grant of information.
Any other questions? Yes, sir? You could say it up to your...
Bob King. I mentioned in previous times about the money that Comcast pays us. And I think you guys say it's not every month, but not every quarter. Or when do they pay?
It's roughly quarterly, but it's not...like, if the quarter ends March 31st, it could be a month or two until we see the check from the first quarter.
So should we get interest on that? Is they're keeping all our money?
No, it's per both the old agreement and the current agreement, it's paid quarterly, but it's not on the fourth quarter because Comcast does that suit its own financial accounting. So per both the old agreement and the current agreement, it's a consistent payment schedule. I think it's within 45 days of the end of each quarter.
Each of their business quarters?
That's correct.
Not fiscal quarters?
Or not calendar quarters?
So we get a fee from Comcast on my...on the bill. It's over 5%. Who's getting the rest of the money?
Well, that'd be for you to take up with Comcast. The only township fee is the 5%.
Oh. Okay. Could you turn the heat down a little bit, please?
Yeah. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries for zero.
Yeah, as a result of our discussion at the last...end of February, I circulated around and spoke with Tom Josiah as a potential candidate for the board to consider as a financial consultant to come in from time to time, as needed to both look at the escrow accounts and the kind of financial setup of the township, as well as to be of assistance to Pani as needed. So he has forwarded them for the board's consideration. I think he said his rate, and there is...
Hundred dollars an hour.
Hundred dollars an hour.
Hundred dollars an hour.
One, zero, zero. So that's just for the board's consideration unless they want to take action on it.
I need more time to review and see, get Pani's opinion on it as well. If this is the route we want to go, then, you know, this is a good starting point. But...
Some would take...
Yeah.
They've got some pretty nice...
You know, it'd be worthwhile looking at some others as well to see, just make sure the rings are aligned and terms and all that. So I need more time to review it, not anybody else's opinion. Okay.
Mike, thank you for getting that for us. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
And that's all I have.
Okay. Just looking to see if there's anything else out here. Need your input. Is there anything on the agenda beyond this that anybody in the board needs a lawyer here for? Do you got anything on there that you're guys...okay. All right. Have a good night. Thank you.
Have a good night, guys.
Thank you. Police Department, February police report is submitted in the back for board of resident review. Public Works, the road department reports are also in the back for board of resident review. The weeds ink contract, we've kind of run over this a couple of times, but I believe we now have all the information on what they're using and where they would be spraying. So thank you, Tag, for getting that. Any concern on your part, Tag, with what they're doing or where they're doing it or the chemicals they're using? I know that the discussion is over, the chemicals they're using.
There's a hole. I guess about one inch, almost one inch thick of different...if you want to read it all. But we...I give you all the roads that we spray. And Hepsa Hill, we'll stay away from it. Sharon don't like the stuff.
Thank you.
We'll stay away from there. Well, we really don't need that one, so it's not by me. Now, one of those.
No, I'm just saying Sharon was one of the...
I do know there's some people down...
A lot of people had built her.
Well, I just wanted to tell everybody saying that, not just Sharon.
Right.
There's a lot of other people down there.
Water, too.
Yeah, I know.
I mean, any concern on your part, Tag, if we take a year off and see how it goes? No, that's...
I mean, how everybody else feels about that. We'll just see how it goes. The main...Tag, the main concern is the overgrowth on the guardrails?
Yeah.
And that's something we could go by weed whack or something, right? Pretty easily?
Yep.
So this is ready this year, maybe?
Yeah, we could...if you want to try to go away with this year, that's fine. But I'd still like to keep the park on there, the third...
Okay.
Program for the park, it was, I think, $275.
Right.
If you want to go away with the guardrails for this year, that's fine.
Is that...that's program one and two?
That would be program two and three we can keep.
Okay, what's...
And that's program two is 2340, and the parks is 275.
Okay.
And their prices haven't changed since 2000, the rate. That's how long we've been using.
Right.
We have to get three quotes every time we build them, so...
Anybody else have an opinion or what?
I looked up some of the chemicals. One of them was delurian, delurin, ADGF, and it's not...do not discharge into soil, subsoil, or into drains, surface water, groundwater. Known in the state of California to cause cancer, an environmental hazard, hazardous substance. Another one was esclanot, I think. Product is classified as having a high potential for reaching surface water via runoff for several months or more. And if there's an organic farmer nearby, it could kill its crops. Okay, that was two of them.
Excuse me. Okay, so do we just want to go with two and three? Program two and three this year, like? Go away with program one? Just very...at least for a year? I make a motion to approve the pricing set forth by Weeds Incorporated Spray for 2016 for program two and program three.
Second.
Questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries three, one. Fire departments, we have the Westwood and Modena reports in the back. I don't know if anyone from there would...
Yeah, the only thing I have is our Fun Drive finally got out in the mail. It was a little delayed, so our A and O's Fun Drive should have reached everybody now. And I know Modena's went out a few months ago. And you should be receiving our invitation. We'd love to have the board represent the residents at our annual banquet. It's April 16th, and Modena's with...will be May 7th. So you should get the invitation to a short. Great. Thanks.
Planning Commission, they'll report. Nothing to go over, okay? Historical Commission, there's meeting minutes in the back. Mr. Rhodes, was there anything you wanted to discuss on from that? Park and Rec Committee, we did have at the last meeting, two individuals stepped forward willing to come onto the Park and Rec Committee, so we'll make a motion on that. But I'll just reiterate, while we're appointing them tonight, or voting to appoint them tonight, they can't really do much of anything because they don't have the board. So please, talk to people you know that may be interested. You know, we post it on the website, on Facebook, wherever we can. The sign's still up in the park, so I see that. But we need more volunteers, but I'd like, you know, first to thank Ms. Korab, Ms. Sarnoski for their volunteering for this. I make a motion to appoint Wanda Korab and Linda Sarnoski to the Park and Recreation Committee for the term 2016 to 2020. Questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries for nothing. Welcome to the Park and Rec Committee. Good to see some people come back on board for that. Treasurers Report. I make a motion to approve the February 29, 2016 Treasurers Report as presented.
Second.
Questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries three, one. I make a motion to approve the February 2016 payment authorization as presented.
Second.
Questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries three, one. Make a motion for all members of the board to sign the municipal deposit resolution from First Niagara Bank.
Second.
I assume Pani, this isn't just for us to be able to sign checks?
Yeah, this is just everyone's name going to make consign checks.
Questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries for zero. Excuse me. Other business, Pani?
Discount news letter. I'm going to have Lisa speak on first.
Okay. Lisa?
The board has requested that I follow up with them on whether we could do one trial newspaper. And they came back and said they would prefer to do a two-issue trial.
This is with who again?
Um, sorry. Home Town Press. They...he explained that because they offer discounts to advertisers, um...
Yeah.
Yeah, the interest in advertising newsletters or bills after that would be one paper.
What was the cost? Or is it...
There's no cost.
Free trial?
Yeah.
Two-issue free trial?
Yes.
The only cost is that we have to get postage in.
We would have to get postage.
And affects the shipping handling.
We get a rough idea what that postage cost would be? Yeah, I know the post card is about $850.
About $1,300, $1,400. It depends on how...
Per mailing?
It depends on how thick the newsletter is, how many pages we go, what size it becomes.
Per mailing?
Yeah. So, I mean, that's just basically for an eight and a half by 11, four sheets, so the postage could vary.
Do we have any line items for that in the budget? I thought we did a 140.
We do have a line item for newsletter.
Is that in the general fund?
Yeah, it's in the general fund. It's in the $1,400 side. Township newsletter, we budgeted $2,000. So it would only kind of cover the cost of one mailing. I love the idea of getting a newsletter done. Part of me wonders whether it's something that we here at the township could do. And then that way, I mean, it's more work for us inside the office, so I'm torn.
Well, I guess, do we have an idea of how much...what content and how much content they're looking for from us, in the resumee? You know, we have to give directions for what goes into it, besides the advertising, obviously.
I'm not sure. We haven't had them actually come in and sit down with us and send emails back. Does the board have an idea of what they would like to see in a newsletter?
Wes Potter did one.
And some really good questions.
2013, over five years?
Three. Three-ish.
There's one in 2011, though.
Yeah. I've seen one from...
Four or five years. I mean, I would like to see just more...excuse me, I'm sorry. More information about what's going on, how to get involved, projects coming up, even projects, you know, outside the township that would affect the township, you know, the train station coming in, the Route 30 project, things of that nature. I mean, without making it a huge book of things, I think we could get a lot in there and get, you know...if we know we're going to do it every six months, we could have a six-month calendar or something on there of the main events going on. Obviously, some things change, but so...that would be what I, you know, my main point of it would be here as far as what we're looking to have in it. Anybody else thoughts?
Well, I think it should also talk about, you know, some things that board supervisors be doing for residents, like in round safety, road safety. And, you know, I am hearing some things about, as far as planning, comprehensive planning of the township, so, you know, that people know that we're making an investment in these things. For example, I plan to attend...I sent an email out, I plan to attend a meeting of branding line concerns, these issues that will come up. So those things I could bring back and, you know, like, put that in the newspaper to residents, which talks about the concerns with open space.
This was the only one that had approached us so far, correct?
Correct.
I'd assume there's others out there. I mean, yeah, I mean, I'm concerned about going over what we budgeted. If the mailing's going to be $1,400 to mail out, we could really technically do one. I know we have some reserves, but...
We could do one this year, and next year, and meet the two. Is there an electronic submission option? I mean, could you email part of those out to those of us that have that? And then that would cut the postage?
Yeah. I know that we do have a mailing list that people have subscribed to. I don't know would the board want to send out just...see, I don't know if we have a way of knowing what addresses those emails are associated with. So the people who signed up for our newsletter online, I can't tell who's a resident and who's not a resident. So if we didn't...I wouldn't know who not to send the physical mailing to at this point.
Maybe we need to update just the general website to take the email address and the address.
I'll see if that's possible.
Yeah. I mean, once they're made out, update that. I'd like to do that.
That's not...
No. But I don't think that would be a huge change to do. But I don't think that would be a huge change to do, but that don't give us a way to, one, get more people, maybe if we keep putting it on the website, not Facebook, to sign up and... I mean, if we're thinking about newsletter, obviously we could, when we're, put that up there, say, you know, you can get electronic copy instead of paper copy, it helps save costs, and this will allow us to do so, might get more interest that way, you know, people know that the newsletter is coming and works. How often do they...